I think building permits that don't go to Greg or does everyone go to Greg?
Everything goes to Greg.
Do we want to?
The signs, I mean, store signs and stuff, yes, those go to Greg and that's what gets filled out on a building permit application.
Yeah, yeah, that's why.
I can't remember, ever remember somebody wanting to put up a sign on a pole because.
Ask him for a permit, did he say?
Yeah.
Yeah, they just do it.
In three years, you know, I think it was happened once, twice, I remember someone asked about putting up signs for free parking. I think it was, I think it was John Shepard put up the sign pointing people to the, away from the municipal lot to the Metro North Line.
I think somebody was going to have like a pop-up store or something wanted to have it for three days or something.
I know that you have sort of unofficial regulations on what signs we put in the village windows. You know, what we do and what we don't do here, basically, whatever is good for the village and not just somebody advertising their store or their book or coming, that kind of stuff. Do we wanna really get into what goes on poles? I mean, then you gotta get into, you know, we don't want political, we do want this, we don't want pride, we do want old people, I don't know, you know. I mean, we're gonna get into all kinds of things.
That seems like we're just opening up a Pandora's box.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. I mean, do we wanna really get into what we want or don't want on a pole? I mean, as long as it's not offensive.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, I know. No, I mean, offensive in terms of, what do I mean?
Well, your offensive and mine might be different, you know, or whatever.
You don't wanna hang pictures of naked ladies on the poles.
You don't, I do.
This is true, but you may enjoy that and I wouldn't, but that's.
It depends.
No, but I mean like.
So do we wanna have anybody, allow anyone to hang anything on?
Well, this is it. I mean, how do we control, how do we say what's good and what's not good to hang on the pole? I mean, do we wanna, you know, and, you know, whether it's your call or the clerk's call, whether it's the mayor's call or the clerk's call, where do we draw that line?
Maybe we can answer this by just asking, is any of this actually enforceable? Like.
No, we don't wanna go there.
Well, the thing is, people are gonna put up lost dog, lost cat signs. If a child is kidnapped, somebody's gonna put signs all over looking for a child.
But I think we changed that to like, I don't know, did we say that was cleared on the top?
It was, yes, it was a handbill that would be permitted.
What about, what about the handbills that popped up recently or the little posters that popped up recently? Like, what is it? No hate, no fear, everyone is welcome here.
Yeah, I mean, they were like signs on people's lawns, there were some on the posts. I mean, maybe we can just limit the amount of time something goes on a post. Yeah, I don't know how to control this because everybody's usually, everybody has different things about what you think should or should not be put up there. And, you know, you run into all kinds of people hating us. I mean, how do we define what goes and what doesn't go? How does anybody define that? I don't know.
Well, and it cannot be stopped anyway. I mean, people are gonna put stuff up.
The way the code reads.
You can remove it.
Any, any resident can pull it down.
Yeah.
So that to me is like if I walk down the street and see something I don't like.
If they didn't get a permit.
I don't even know if it's if they didn't get a permit.
If they have a permit, then they don't have the right to, they can't tear it down.
Yeah, but I mean.
I mean, they can.
How do you know if you're walking down the street, I have a permit for this and he doesn't have a permit for that if I'm walking down?
So you come to the village office and find out who has a permit.
Or that anything that is permitted needs to have a little tag at the end that says permitted by the village of Cold Spring, printed on it. Or a sticker or something.
So that goes into chapter one oh four, right, signs and plackets and permits and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, I think we should.
So I've changed handbills in public places to read, no person shall throw or deposit any handbill, any handbill in or upon any sidewalk, street, or other public place within the village. Handbills on a tree or utility pole in the village require permit, see chapter four, one oh four, signs and plackets.
It works for me.
That works.
And then we'll deal with it then.
Okay, um, fifty-nine eleven should be vehicles, not vehicle.
Why?
So that's resolved. Uh, I've deleted commercial or non-commercial from, close to the.
So what did we end up doing with the?
We just said refer to chapter one oh four. It said handbills on a tree or utility pole in the village requires a permit.
Yeah, it says a permit from the clerk and that's.
No, C one, chapter one oh four.
Oh, okay.
C one oh four, so we'll, so this way we'll define it in one oh four.
Do you want that responsibility, Jeff?
Come on, Jeff, it's gonna be so much fun.
I mean, we, I'm sure you, you'd do fine, what if we get some clerk like, you know, like Mary?
Mary would have, Mary would have.
I would want the responsibility of deciding what's appropriate content.
But see, I think then the clerk.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know.
I don't know if I do.
Then the clerk has to, I mean, the clerk should have the, the ability to say, I need to bring this to the board, you know. I mean, I think you should not approve something on the spot anyway. You know, here's the application, fill it out, I'll get back to you in a couple of days, and then you do what you need to do.
Yeah, 'cause some stuff will be easy, this is other stuff. But I don't know if there's gonna be a neo-Nazi gathering somewhere, which they could.
Where, where is it gonna happen?
Your house.
Well, I mean, you had the KKK here, you know, I mean, you know, they could advertise too, we know.
Okay, let's go, I'm sorry.
I think the next one is fifty-nine dash sixteen, um, and Fran has recommended adding or private carding services.
Let me somebody revise that. I said that so long ago, a week and a half.
I'm fine with that.
I'm good.
Okay, it works.
There's your bunk, that's it.
I wanna point out that fifty-nine dash seventeen says that trash containers should be placed out no earlier than four P M. On Mondays and must be removed by midnight Tuesday night.
Why are you finding that out?
Because my neighbors put theirs out earlier than that and take them in, actually, they switch them on Thursday. They bring in the garbage on Thursday and put up the recycling.
Our neighbor does that too.
Huh?
Our neighbor does that, but there are a lot of B and Bs do that for sure.
Yes, yes, that's what it is. They have one person come in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now, uh, if you look at fifty-nine dash nineteen, you'll see penalties. Any person committing la 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 la, the fine is two hundred and fifty dollars. Is everybody okay with that? Not exceeding two hundred and fifty dollars. Everybody okay with that?
And is this for, what is this for littering?
Littering.
Yeah, I guess that's okay.
Okay.
A term not exceeding, or by imprisonment, does that lea-, I mean, is that legal?
What's that?
It says not exceeding two hundred and fifty dollars or by imprisonment for a term not exceeding fifteen.
Right.
Is that?
Yep.
We can do that, okay.
Almost all, almost all of the.
Fines.
Almost all of the penalties give a dollar, give a dollar amount, an imprisonment amount and, or both.
That's somewhere where I, hopefully you guys won't object that I would be able to, you know.
Do we think you are present?
To what?
To commute the sentence.
Oh, to, God, here we go again.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, yeah, continue as an offense for each day, twenty-four hours, should be deemed a dis- yeah, okay.
I keep thinking of Alice's restaurant when I'm reading this.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, all right, where are we?
Fifty-seven.
Where are you, fifty-seven?
Reimbursement. Now, this one.
Where are we?
Where are you, Murray?
You had said fifty-seven, was no one moving that one up?
No, we didn't do.
No, we didn't finish this one, this one.
Oh!
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Fifty-nine dash twenty-two.
Yeah, I wanted to just move that section up.
Oh.
Deposit restricted.
I'm sorry, I, I got out of it.
Sorry, Murray. The last, uh, fifty-nine dash twenty-two, uh, says deposit restricted. No person shall deposit garbage, litter, rubbish, or refuse collected from any commercial place or private premise in any public litter receptacle or private receptacle other than their own within the village of Cold Spring. I wanted to move that up, um, and you thought it was okay. Uh, I'd like to move it up to be four fifteen nine nineteen. It's sort of hanging out at the bottom there.
Fran, you're more than welcome to move it up and you're more than welcome to change the numbers in the index and change the numbers on the sections.
I should do that too. It may take me forever. Is everybody okay with me moving it up?
Yes.
Okay.
Remember, it's gotta go in the index too.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, okay, so I'm moving it up here. Okay, now this is gonna be a second.
Next one is. Okay, so now fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, this'll be nineteen, this'll be.
Now fifty-seven, we just enacted, um, six months ago.
Mm-hmm.
This was at, less than six months ago, in October. This one was recommended by John, um, to make clear to everyone that when consultants were identified as being required, the applicant for whatever board was reviewing the application, the applicant was responsible for reimbursing the village for the cost of the consultant. A minimum amount was identified as to how much has to go into the escrow accounts. And there is a, a lower limit, which if the escrow account falls below that, then it must be replenished. And so, mm, that's the intent of this law. There are changes to the one sixty, one thirty-four, sixty-four, the tree advisory board and the planning board to reference chapter fifty-seven.
Okay, so my one question is, uh, maybe it's clear somewhere, it's not to me, that, you know, that the board would actually, well, it says final approval. I just, which I guess is okay if it's final approval. Did we add final?
Somebody put final in there.
Because if it's just approval by the village board, we really don't know. I mean, the stuff we, it comes to us and we look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, we get bills from John, it's stuff's coming out of the escrow and we have to approve that. But we usually send that, like, stuff for the C U C. If we, if I'm looking at the bills from the C M R, I send them to Marie and you look at them, or Jeff, as you look at them.
Yeah.
So, and the same would be planning too. It's like, I have no idea what they've said or what they're asking for.
Typically, but not always, um, John's, um, invoices, when they're for, when it's for a planning board issue, it's a separate invoice.
Yeah, no, I know it's in that, that's another problem. The thing is that there are questions on there that the board won't know unless, unless the, you as a chair of C U C says, yeah, I talked to John.
I'm, I'm good with it. I, yeah, I thought that.
'Cause there's sometimes it's like, whoa, I mean, stuff that he got through us that.
I, I thought that, um, they went to Matt and Al.
They go to the board chair.
For.
When there's a signature to the board.
Sign off before they come to the audit.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that's happening. That's how it happens? It goes to them and then they okay it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it goes for them for approval if it's specific to their board and escrow down.
Okay, because the only, that kind of scene with C U C or when we sent it to Marie, so.
C is 'cause he puts, the C U, C U C stuff is mixed in with the general advice stuff.
Oh, okay, all right, got you.
And a P and D, um, P and D has been a separate invoice twice, um, and Victoria is a separate invoice.
Right, okay, I'm good.
Okay, so we've got final in there, so we're going to resolve that.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other one, which you said, limited to an application for a sketch, so.
Yes, and I responded, um, with what a sketch is.
Okay, fine.
So I'm gonna resolve the sketch. Now, you had, you had made a, a note, compensation village for review costs. Planning, zoning, H G R B, T A B. Those are the four boards which may have compensation for consultants.
T A B also?
Pardon me?
T A B also? The TAB also?
Yes, yes, yep. Um, you'll see that when you see the TAB chapter.
So I know that it's mixed in there and my suggestion was that we, even if it's repetitive, that we put that somewhere very clearly that these are the boards.
Yes, now, now, if, if you look at the, sorry, it's, it's in here. It may not be as visible as you would like. If you look at board, the definition of board, um, the planning board, the zoning appeals, or the historic district review board, it should include the, the tree advisory board. Or the historic district review board. Is that, is that?
Yeah, I guess that's.
That may, the, the, okay, you're, you're okay with that?
Can you, or doesn't that work in a definition, just in parentheses or in, whatever?
Ah, okay, so I found a convention which may work.
Yes, wherever it is, say, see definition.
Quote, quote, name, quote, so it'd be quote, board, quote. And if, if you feel that it needs to be capitalized, do so. And you wanted that in the, someplace earlier, right?
It was somewhere earlier, 'cause like saying that there was no definition yet, and you said you couldn't put it capital because of.
Let me see if I can find it.
I thought I saw it, but I don't see it.
I may have just. It's in fifty-seven dash three.
Yep.
It's like the bottom, six, three and down, uh, seven.
Fifty-seven dash three A, the reviewing, I would leave it as, as Fran. So I would put it in quotes.
Application.
And capitalize the B.
Is, is there a, um, is there a convention as to where the definitions go in chapters? There isn't.
No, they are, depending upon how many articles you have, you can have definitions in each article. So you could have article one that has sections one through five, article two, section six through ten, article. And in each article, you can have definitions.
So in this particular chapter, we've got the purpose and then we've got the statutory authority. Can we move definitions? I know I hate to be a pain in the butt, 'cause you're gonna hate me and you're gonna tell me to do it.
Yeah, I'm gonna really, I'm going to really eat you on that one.
Okay, I won't tell you, I won't touch it. I'll leave it to E code to figure that one out, if there's a.
So we're capitalizing board and that is, and, and just putting in parentheses?
Yes.
Okay.
In quotes.
Yes.
Okay, that works.
So I'm going to, ah, but Fran, as it turns out, um, yes, okay, the. So we're good with the B.
Okay, so we're gonna prove that.
And we're good with that.
And there's another one.
There's another one down in C.
Last sentence.
I don't see it.
Um, in fifty-seven, whatever we are, fifty-seven three, uh, C, the sentence before the last. Uh, one, two, three, fourth sentence towards the right-hand side, boards of the village. I'll get it.
Actually, there, I would recommend, I would not capitalize there. I would leave, I would leave that because you're talking about multiples of them.
Okay.
I. The reviewing board, I think, was very specific, the reviewing board. If, if you think that it should be capitalized, then do it.
The several boards of the village.
By applicant presented to the section shall not be used to offset the village's general expenses, professional service, uh, several boards.
I like the word various for several.
Yeah, I don't think that should be capital either.
Okay, so we're gonna not do that one, relax that one out, right?
Maybe various is better than several.
What did you like better than several?
Various.
Okay, Fran, you got it?
I got it.
Okay.
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 Marie has add paragraph.
That's been done.
Okay.
I, the, um, definitions were not in alphabetical order.
So they are now.
They are now.
Okay. And did you add the TAB to this? You did, okay. So the last board.
It's not, yeah, the last board doesn't have.
Oh, that needs to be deleted 'cause we moved it up.
I'm sorry?
The, in the definitions, you have board at the beginning and then you have board at the end. I'm just taking out the last.
I deleted the last one.
It's still on.
Okay, let me, let me s- take a break because I don't wanna overdo or undo what you're doing, Murray.
Done, it's deleted.
All right, I got it.
Okay.
Now, funding of escrow account, I had put the applicable board in, the board in uppercase.
Yeah, that should be in lowercase there, right?
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the funding of the escrow account, it, it was a, oh, it has always been two hundred and fifty dollars, but it was never written out in English.
Is it always, for every board, two hundred and fifty dollars, or does it depend on?
If you go to the bottom of the chapter, it will tell you how much for what activities by which board.
Now, these don't, this shouldn't go on the fee schedule?
Uh, no, these are escrow. They are not fees.
But that's, uh, that doesn't make, to me, it's, I don't know, I didn't read through the whole thing. So it's may ask app, may ask the applicant to fund an escrow account in the amount of, so it's just, it says they may.
That's right.
But you may ask, so they, why don't it just be they may ask for, ask for escrow, or may ask for an amount?
According to schedule A.
And, and the amount is determined by.
Right.
The type of application that is being submitted.
Right, I understand that.
And if you go to the bottom, it's there, and board.
So, but on the top, why put, why, two hundred and fifty dollars is confusing to me because it's ask, it may ask you that, it may also ask you for five thousand dollars.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I know it might be explained on the bottom, but up top there, if you're reading it, it's.
Okay, uh, let me, if we go to the bottom.
May ask the applicant to fund an escrow.
Just take out the two hundred and fifty and just say, C, fifty-seven.
It's not there.
Schedule A.
It, it's not there.
What's not there?
The two hundred and fifty is not there.
Yeah, but what's the two, I don't, I don't understand.
So I think it should be that they should, they may ask, they're just saying they may ask the applicant to fund an escrow.
Yes.
Well, I'm trying to get my head around.
Go, go to.
What's the two hundred and fifty-four?
Put that out of your mind for a moment. Go to the last few pages. The type of application, if you're applying for a subdivision, if you're going to subdivide one to five lots, fifteen hundred dollars. When it goes down to five hundred, you've gotta give another hundred.
Okay, but that's not, that's not addressing this up on the top. I mean, can't we just get rid of it? An applicant may, may be asked to, what's that?
What's the two hundred and fifty-four?
The two hundred and fifty, that's what I'm saying.
It's upfront.
They may ask you for that, but we don't need two fifty there. An applicant may be asked to fund an, uh, fund an escrow. That's all should be there prior to commencement of review.
Do we get two hundred and fifty before they do all this?
Before they do any review, they want two fifty upfront, before they do anything.
They may.
They may, yes, they do.
Well, it's not they are, may is not a good word then if they are, if they have to give upfront. But if they, they may also be asked, if, if an application comes for like a major project, they're not gonna ask them for two hundred and fifty dollars, right, upfront. So the first thing they're gonna say when they're there is you're gonna need an escrow at an amount of whatever, butterfield, maybe it's ten thousand dollars.
Probably was.
Right, so two fifty just, it means.
When do we ask for two fifty?
So do you want me to, you do, when an applicant files, okay, sorry. When an applicant files an application for a sketch plan or conceptual review, in those two situations.
Okay.
The board that they are asking that from may ask them for two hundred and fifty dollars to fund an escrow account. It's just in those two situations where the applicant may be asked to establish an escrow in the amount of two hundred and fifty.
But a sketch or conceptual could be fairly complicated too, or could be expensive.
Right, and, and if it is.
So why do we have to put two hundred and fifty there? Why are we, why can't we just put, they may be asked to fund an escrow.
Okay, I will not do that unless, unless.
But why, 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 why doesn't that make sense to you? That they may ask for it?
Because the two hundred and fifty dollars is there to do a sketch plan, a minimum of two hundred and fifty for a sketch plan, or a conceptual review. If we add that to the table at the end, I'm fine.
I, I don't think it should be. I think they should be at, they be asking.
So are they not?
It's not, it's not saying in the end that, for any specific reason, I don't know why we're.
It does say for a specific reason.
So we don't have a sketch plan or?
Yes, we do. We require a sketch plan.
Right, but we don't have it in the table.
It's not in the table.
So why don't we just put it in the table?
That's what I said.
Okay, good with putting it in the table.
Okay, works for me. Is this table, I mean, tables drive me nuts 'cause to me they should be in little boxes and stuff and they never are. But anyway, do we want this table for any reason to be alphabetized? I hate to be opinionated, but I mean, I could, no. It's just, that's got nothing to do with anything, so it doesn't have to be, but.
No.
Okay, so we're just gonna add sketch pill, sketch plan and whatever else that other thing is, and neither one would make sense to me since I have a conceptual review. Informal sketch plan discussion or conceptual review. All right, okay, well, okay, okay, wait, wait, wait. An applicant files a formal land use application, the application. Okay, so this is, we, we need to. I'm gonna pull this out of there because that's just gonna drive me nuts. So the way this reads now, it basically says funding an informal sketch plan discussion or conceptual review, that's, that's A, and then it talks about that. Then formal application, and then it talks about that, then custody of accounts, and then talks.
Where are you, about, where are you?
I'm back to where we, where we had the two hundred and fifty.
Fifty-seven dash six.
Fifty-seven, six.
So, so it is sort of a, uh, if you look at A, the, it's like, the beginning of it tells you informal sketch plan discussion or conceptual review. Now, if we take the two fifty out of there, um.
May ask the appli, the applicant to fund an escrow account prior to commencement of the review.
So we have to then refer to schedule A the same way the next one does.
What's that?
So we have to do the same thing in A that we said in B, 'cause A is informal, B is formal application review.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you just said.
I'm, I'm looking at the way it's worded. A says informal sketch plan discussion or conceptual review. If we take out the two fifty, we have to reference schedule A.
If we take out the two fifty, we have to what?
Reference schedule A, the same way we did with B, the formal application review. Maybe we need to just read A very carefully before we pull out the two fifty.
I think, I think that the applicable board may ask the, the applicant to fund an escrow account. That doesn't necessarily mean that they will. It could be small.
Right. It's not intended to cover informal review. Do we wanna say any amount not less than two hundred and fifty dollars?
Nope.
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 It's a flat two fifty.
So on the top, just a quick question. Uh, it says, why, why are we starting with sketch plan and conceptual plan?
There are four, uh, there are four topics in here, right?
Right.
Funding of an escrow account is the overriding topic. So if you are, uh, asking for an informal sketch plan, a discussion or conceptual review, then you look at A.
I understand that.
If you are filing a formal application, then you look at B. C talks about where the money goes.
Right, so, but why, but it seems like, so inform a sketch plan, I'm sorry, is sketch plan, I don't understand sketch, sketch plan is always informal?
No, 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 no.
Isn't that part of a formal application?
It is not, it is not always informal. A sketch plan is a required element for some planning discussions. But people will sometimes come to the planning board and say, I'd like to discuss this with you informally. When they do that, the. When they do that, the planning board can ask them to deposit two hundred and fifty dollars in an escrow account.
For informal, I, I don't know why.
Can I play devil's advocate for a minute?
Sure. It's like, it, it doesn't make sense. I don't, I guess I don't know the process, so.
On an informal review, I'm trying to figure out what costs could be incurred by the planning board that would require an escrow account.
Yeah.
Okay, and that amount is intended in sentence two, to cover any village consultants. Which is often requested even prior to the submission of a formal application, or the paying of any application fees. The informal sketch discussion or conceptual review shall not include any formal engineering or other professional review unless the es- es- applicant established an escrow pursuant to schedule A.
So I'm gonna go back and say I'm fine, leaving the two fifty where it is.
I, but, that's, well, I, I, I don't, I don't really care. I mean, through the say, but I, I do care. I, I mean, it just doesn't. It's like, why, why are we breaking, if we're, if the, if the head topic is funding an escrow account, then we break an informal sketch plan, which I, I can't see why we would ask them for, I, I, what it says here. I can't imagine what you would come in for and why we would go to any, why we would charge anybody for an informal review on it. Because if you're there, and it doesn't involve, we don't charge them, we don't charge someone with a formal review unless, unless, unless we go, unless we're doing, we need, you know, to go to, no?
No, you ask them for the escrow account.
Let me, let me ask.
Upfront.
Upfront for a reason, not, not for their review, but for the additional review, like if we need an attorney, or if we need.
No, 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 you ask them for it upfront.
Let me ask, let me, let me.
Yeah, but you're doing, that's because it's a formal review.
Yes.
An informal review, you're not gonna go into any depth, because it's informal. So, well, who are you gonna, why would you charge them? What are you charging them for?
Think about the amount of money, by the way, that you're asking, two hundred and fifty dollars, that's one and a half hours of legal fees. That's nothing.
Yeah, but we, our board's.
But they're not going to a legal fee in an informal review.
Our board's gonna take, they charge.
They may.
No, they wouldn't, not in an informal review.
They're not going to a formal review, wouldn't they?
Sorry, sorry. They could, they could.
I would not ask my attorney if somebody came in here and, hey, look at this, and you, could you tell me what you think on this? And, okay, I'll go to my attorney?
It says this does not include any formal engineering or other professional review. That's the last sentence of, of A. So, m- maybe, um, it's almost like we're actually charging them a fee to do an informal review. It's not an escrow. It's like a fee. Pay us two hundred and fifty dollars and do an informal review for you. It's, if it was an escrow, we're not going to the professionals or the lawyers or the engineers, then why is it considered an escrow?
So if you look at A,
Mm-hmm.
the amount is intended to cover an informal review by a village consultant.
Yeah, but it says.
By a village consultant, which is often requested even prior to the submission of a formal application, or the paying of any application fees.
But then it says the informal sketch discussion or conceptual.
The informal sketch shall not include any formal engineering or other professional review.
So who's the village consultant if it's not, if we're not going to any formal engineer or professional review?
I'm sorry, we can go to a village consultant. The second sentence says, you may, the, the amount is intended to cover an informal review by a village cons- consultant, which is often requested by the applicant, even prior to.
I mean, it's not gonna hurt us to leave it there. But it's, it's just. I mean, it's almost like we're just charging them a fee to review.
They may, and they get, and you give it back, right?
If it's an escrow, you give it back.
The escrow, right, this, the, the, the village has to submit detailed invoices
Right.
to the applicant, showing where the money went. And at the end of the process, whatever's left over goes back to the applicant.
If you're, if you're doing a review, if you're doing, if somebody comes in with a formal review, or comes in with an application, and we ask for escrow, the escrow is not for the village, the village, or for that board. It's for consultants or anything that will be charged before that. So in an informal one, then we're not, it says no engineering or professional reviews. So who are we getting, so who are we going to? Who was the board going to in asking for information that you would take out of an escrow? What would come out of an escrow if you're not going to, to engineering or professional review?
This amount.
What, what, no, what would answer that question?
Planning, a planner. I might go to a planner. I might go to an architect.
A planner, a planner is a, a professional.
Sorry, look at, look at sentence number two.
A professional. I'm looking at the sentence right here that says what an informal.
The amount is intended to cover informal review by a village consultant. Consultant here, and I believe we defined what consultants are in the beginning.
Professional consultant, planning, engineering, legal, so.
Um, they are engineers, they are planners, they are architects, um, they are attorneys, um. So, okay. Title examiners, traffic consultants, architects, preservationists, and other technical and environmental experts. If you want.
I think you just do whatever you want with that. It does make absolutely no sense, sorry.
Okay.
I mean, like, it doesn't make any sense. It's like we're breaking something down and asking somebody for money for nothing.
I have absolutely no problem doing the following. I'll go back to John and say, John, we need more explanation of this. Keeping in mind that that's gonna cost a hundred and some dollars an hour.
And when.
You want me to do that? I'll do that.
No, no, wait. What, Fran, what do you think? And Lynn, what do you think?
Okay, here's what I think.
Okay, thank you.
I think if it's an informal back and forth between people, between the board and somebody who's maybe floating an idea about something that they may wanna do with their property, let's say. I don't think we should charge them two hundred and fifty dollars just in case we may need to go to an engineer about it.
Or I'm not sure why we would be in an informal. I guess, I guess I'd, before we go to John, I'd like to know if, what, what the planning board, who, if they, it says it's done all the time, so if that's the case, I'd just like to understand it better.
Well, what's, what I'm getting hung up on is what, the different, how do you draw the distinction between an informal and a formal?
The last two sentences of section A to me are opposite.
Yeah.
Um, and that's what's confusing me. Um, I know it says, the amount is intended to cover an informal review by a village consultant, and then it says it is not including any formal. So I don't know the difference between an informal and a formal review.
I have absolutely no problem going to John at a hundred plus dollars an hour.
Now, we don't have to go to John. We're not going to John.
Can we ask the planning board or the H D R B, who, who would use this more often?
Why don't we just take the number out?
And why can it not just say, may charge? They may charge, and, and not have a chart anywhere. They may charge.
May ask the applicant to fund an escrow account prior to commencement of the review, take out the two fifty.
Taking out the two fifty doesn't change the issue. I mean, all, all you've done is taken the, the dollar sign away from the fee.
I mean, I would be, I would be comfortable if it did not cover an informal review by a village consultant. If it's a, if it's an informal review, yeah, but see, then you don't need an escrow account. I was gonna say, if it's just with the board, then you don't need an escrow account.
Okay, let's move on. I'm gonna talk to, I'm gonna talk to the, uh, the chairs of the boards, and I'm gonna ask them to explain that to me, and I'll come back with their, their information.
Oh, I have to see if my charger is gonna work. I'm gonna unplug this one.
No, no, that's okay. I'm, I'm charged as much as I need to.
Okay, remove from that, um, what else do we have? The big P, Cs, capitalization, those are all good. Um, there's one down the bottom, it's thirty. I'm just adding thirty. It's good. That's good. So it's that one, one little thing, which really is my big.
Okay, so I'm gonna hold this one pending.
And that's the only thing. And I'll, then I'll talk to the boards.
So, so far tonight, we have. The nine is okay to move, forty-five is okay to move, forty-eight is pending, fifty-nine is okay to move, fifty-seven is pending. Uh, sixty-four, we didn't do tonight, so.
Uh, we're five minutes tonight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Sixty-four is thirty-something pages in line.
Yeah, I'm done.
Oh, good. I've only got five percent battery charge left, anyway.
So shall we start with, I guess, cleaning up these that are pending tonight?
So what do we just have? That one, Marie's gonna put the wording or whatever on that one?
On, on chapter forty-eight.
Yep.
And you're gonna look at fifty-seven, and then we'll start with sixty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And work onto that. And then I've listed the ones that I saw, which is seventy-one, seventy-six, eighty-one, eighty-seven, and so on, but I can, um, if that's okay, I'll just send that over.
Yeah.
F Y I, I'm out of town March eighteenth through twenty-first, which is a Wednesday to Tuesday.
I'm gonna also be gone sometime in there, so.
Okay.
So why don't we, we'll set the next date to, next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday is.
Twenty-sixth?
I think that works.
Um, we don't have, well, next Wednesday. Is there anything next Wednesday, Jeff?
Not in Jeff's office.
Well, for the, for the.
H D R B.
For the, uh, so there's no, the judge isn't hearing anything?
During the day.
Okay. Cause at night, I mean, they, they caucus around her.
Yeah, uh, Monday nights is court.
Okay.
So the twenty-sixth, I guess, okay, um. And then if you wanna go on to the following, uh, following Wednesday, March fourth, I mean, it's up to you guys. You know, right?
Very good, thank you.